See, so Mark Herman and Joe Shinat at this time, they haven't shown up, so they'll be both excused absences. Paul, you'll be seated.
Okay.
Wow, gee, I don't believe we have any minutes ready.
I couldn't find any in my package, so I was looking for those.
All right, so I'll take a motion to skip over item two.
So.
Second.
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 All right.
All right, so let's pull the board, see who's here. If you're with anybody, where you calling in from? OJ?
Calling in from home, in my office by myself.
Okay, Paul?
Calling from home, in my office by myself, my wife is somewhere in the house.
Steve?
Yeah, I'm at home in the bedroom alone.
Okay, and I'm at my office alone. All right, next item, continuing another business, SPI 2020-15, map 118 lot 64 and 65, Mark Stiles, trustee, SNA Offices Realty Trust Sabre Mountain Properties, one and two, multi-use building. Application for site plan review approval to merge two adjacent lots, demolish two buildings and replace buildings with one proposed multi-use building will be submitted to the planning board. Applicant Mark D. Stiles, trustee, SNA Offices Realty Trust, PO Box 1113 North Mathfield Mash. 02059, property owners and properties Sabre Mountain Properties LLC, PO Box 820, Lincoln, New Hampshire, 03251-0820. Owns 155 Main Street, map 118 lot 65. And also map 118 lot 64, both lots are in the Village Center VC District. Applicant surveyor engineer, Josh M. McAllister, P E H E B Engineers, Inc., 2605 White Mountain Highway, North Conroe, New Hampshire, 0360. Applicant and two property owners are represented by agent proposal applicant proposes to voluntary merge voluntarily merge the two lots and construct a 3,586 square foot multi-use building consisting of retail and residential usage, three commercial units totaling 2460 square feet. Proposed on the ground level, three apartments on second level and three apartments, three apartment units on third floor. Josh?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just a point of order, do we have Carol online, so I'm making sure that we're taking minutes, I didn't hear anyone respond back to you.
Okay, she hasn't responded, it looks like she's having difficulty with her audio.
My concern, my concern is, you know, that we have someone from the planning office make sure be able to take minutes for this meeting before we proceed.
Okay, you want to vote, take a five minute recess, I'll try and get Carol on the phone, see what's going on.
Yeah, I would just make sure so that, I mean, her only other alternative is to listen to the tape on YouTube, but I don't know how she normally does it, so. And if she has any input during this, I think it's probably important to get that from her as well.
Okay, all right, give me a second.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, Paul, how you doing? Just fine, thank you, sorry to be, took me a while.
All right, so Carol, we're working on Mark Stiles' application.
Okay, good.
And we did, back on November 11th, we did accept the application as complete.
Correct.
Meeting has been continued to today.
Correct.
So Josh, go ahead, please.
I'm actually gonna pass it to Mark Stiles to start the presentation for us this time around.
Okay.
Thank you, Josh, thank you, board, I hope everybody is safe and healthy in these uncertain days, I wanted to focus on our commercial side of this, this project, we haven't talked about the commercial piece at all, we focused a lot on residential, but I want you to understand the purpose, the vision that I initially had for this project. You probably see somebody that you don't recognize, Joseph Schrand, that gentleman there is Dr. Joe, he's an author, he's a speaker, he's a podcaster. He has a psychological approach called the I Am approach. What our plan is with one of the commercial units is to have the very first I Am Institute. The I Am Institute will actually be an aggregator of professional services to help individuals better themselves. Dr. Joe is a award-winning author of a book called Outsmarting Anger. What the plan would be is we would take one of these commercial spaces and have a futuristic appointment-only type of event, a type of facility where they would onboard, they would understand the person's needs and desires, and then they would aggregate through the network of I Am-approved professionals. What I'd like to do right now is I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Joe for a moment to explain what the I Am approach is and how it can help the town of Lincoln, you may actually recognize him not from a Zoom meeting, but from the award-winning television show from 1972 called Zoom, the original Zoom, this is Joe from Zoom in addition to being a a trained psychiatrist and a world-renowned author, so Dr. Joe, if you could take a few minutes and explain to our board what the I Am approach actually is.
I would be delighted, thank you, Mark, and thank you, Planning Board of Lincoln, I really appreciate the opportunity to potentially house the very first I Am Institute. So, let me tell you what the I Am is, if you want, if I turn off my screen, my video, you'll actually see the logo, but if you prefer, I can just tell you a little bit about it. What would you prefer, just look at me as a psychiatrist or look at the I Am logo, totally up to you guys.
Do you have any preference?
I would prefer to look at the person speaking personally.
And it's me, Mark, I will be delighted to do that, so here's the idea, and it really, it really can be a controversial idea in my field of psychiatry, but I don't think anybody is sick or broken. I don't believe that anybody is doing other than their best they can at every moment in time with the potential to change in the very next second to another best they can, this is your current maximum potential. And I given it the logo I Am, because in physics, you guys still awake? Whenever I say physics, people immediately fall asleep, but in physics, the symbol capitalized stands for potential current. When I created this back in 1982, I thought, what if we flip this I upside down? And instead of calling it a potential current, we call it a current potential. And we look at everyone at a maximum current potential, simply doing the best they can at this moment in time with the potential to change in the very next second to another I Am. This is who I am and I matter, but we are influenced by four domains. No one's gonna argue that your home domain has had an influence on who you are, the home that you have grown up in has a huge influence on who you are right now. Then there's the social domain, which is the rest of the world, that's us being here even though each of us is in our own home potentially. It's walking down the street, it's going to school, it's being in your business, it's everything other than the home domain. And you can certainly appreciate that the stuff that happens at home influences the things that happen in the rest of your world. Those two domains are outside, then the two internal domains, your biological domain of your brain and body, are you hungry, are you tired, are you digesting your lunch? And then what I call the IC domain, how do I see myself? How do I think other people see me? Human beings are very interested in what other people think or feel, we call that empathy. But what we really want to know is what are you thinking about me? And these four domains drive us, but we respond to them the best we can. It doesn't mean that you have to like your I Am, it doesn't mean you have to condone it, it's not a free ride, you're gonna be held responsible because everything you do has a natural consequence, and it doesn't even mean you're gonna be successful. And for some people, success is when you love going to work and love going home. For some people, success is having food. For some people, success is having a home to have a refrigerator, for some people, success is just waking up and being able to get through the day. So everybody will decide what success means to them, but instead of judging ourselves and other people as lessened and broken, not doing as well as we can, should be doing better. Let's look again at why we do what we do based on the influence of the four domains. And just think about these words, look again. Again, look, again, to repeat something, look like a spectator. The I Am is saying, let's respect why people do what they do. When's the last time you got angry at someone treating you with respect? It's that respect that leads to value, which I believe is what everybody wants, it is the common thread that binds us, is just want to feel valued by somebody else, and what's cool is using the I Am approach and recognizing that you're doing the best you can. Even that's an I Am, right, that small little flitch, right, but instead of judging ourselves, let's look again at why we do what we do, we all want to feel valuable at every and any moment in time, you can remind someone of their value, and whenever you remind someone of their value, you increase your own value, and that leads to trust. And trust allows a person to really explore who they are and why they do what they do without the fear that they're gonna be judged. So this is part of what I would love to bring into Lincoln. The I Am approach is a global approach, it's not for one group or another, it's for everybody. And what's cool about it is because of these four domains, a small change can have a big effect, because the domains interact, you don't need to change everything, a small change can have a big effect, if the planning board decides to approve Mark Stiles' position, that small change could have a big effect, not just on Mark Stiles, me, but on Lincoln, all the people there and all the people around it. So small changes have big effects, but the second rule may be even more important, the second truth, I think everybody has an I Am. I think everybody's interested in what other people think or feel about them. And because of that IC domain, you have an effect on someone's biological domain, because you know it feels different when you feel you're being treated with respect or disrespect. Because of that, we control no one, but we influence everyone. Think about that, we control no one, we influence everyone, and I would be fascinated why you gentlemen have chosen to be on the planning board, I mean, it is a huge influence on your town. And get to ask, what kind of influence do you want to be?
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely, sir.
Just a quick question, so I'm, I for one, I'm willing to stipulate that the psychological theories or processes that you're describing have merit and that they have application and that they could be of great utility. But my question for, for you and for us as a planning board is, could you explain or could Mark explain to all of us how this is gonna be implemented with respect to the town of Lincoln, because we, with due respect, we don't have time to go through the entire psychological theory and evolution of your positions or everything, but we do have time for a quick discussion of of what kinds of applications you're thinking of using in the space, and I for one, there's nothing that you've mentioned that is not welcome in the town of Lincoln, on the other hand, I can't see that everybody in the town is gonna line up to go through treatment or whatever the process is in your facility, so I'd just like to have a clue as to what you're intended with respect.
Mark, do you want me to address that? Yeah, so, so thank you, Mr. Herman, this is not saying I'm gonna be bringing the I Am to treat people in Lincoln or to solve any problems, the I Am is not even about treatment, it's about change and evolution and adaptation. So certainly if people want to be in that process, they're more than welcome to. But what we're hoping to do is create a brick and mortar space where we can train other trainers so they can then take the I Am and really push it out into the, the rest of the communities, not just in Lincoln or New Hampshire, but really everywhere, this application, this approach is not confined to New Hampshire or Nevada or New York or Nairobi. It is a universal truth, I believe, that we all want to feel valued. And by having an actual center where I can train other trainers as well as if we have people who are interested in being participants, and they come in and they say, this is what I want to change. We give them a roadmap to do it, the I Am becomes a roadmap. So it's applicable in all sorts of arenas, not just in communities, because the I Am is not just about an individual, but about a community as well. A community has a home domain, it has its social domain, which is an interaction with the rest of the world. Its IC domain, how it sees itself as a community, how it thinks other people see it. And its biological domain are all the people who live in that community. So to answer your question, I am not saying I'm gonna be coming in and treating Lincoln, that's not the idea at all. People want to come in and learn from it, that's great, but it becomes a hub and a center for the I Am. It's the I Am Institute, I hope that answers your question.
It does, and Mark, what's the percentage of the commercial space that will be occupied?
So, Mark, I'm glad you asked, I wanted to just fill in the blanks where Joe may have left some out, it, it also becomes an aggregator of professional services, so it becomes a one-stop wellness facility as well, where there would be I Am-certified health providers, also, you know, massage, chiropractic, we're gonna build in mediation as a practice there as well as a number of coaching methodologies. Right now, it's either going to be one-third or two-thirds of the commercial space, Mark, I hope that answers your question. But I wanted to share with you all the vision of what I want to do there in Lincoln. As for the building, the structure, the footprint, why we're actually here, I'm gonna pass it back to Josh to update you with what we have come up with as a concept that we hope you'll agree is a great concept, so go ahead.
Do you have any other questions for Dr. Joe before we move on? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Great, so I'll, I'll jump in here, when we had the last meeting in November, we, we heard loud and clear that there were some concerns about the site. And we took the approach of trying to address the concerns that were presented at the meeting, made sure that our plan met all of the checklist items that are outlined in the ordinances, but also we, we took into consideration the need for, for the waiver for the density, which was a point of conversation for a large chunk of our meeting, so. The approach we took was to strengthen our plan with respect to the comments that were provided at the address some of those concerns, do another detailed scrub of the checklist, make sure that we addressed everything with our plan application. And then we were relatively excited at the waiver approach, because not only does the, the waiver, it does the, the ordinance allow for a waiver from the geometric or dimensional requirements as long as all other items are met, it corresponds almost perfectly with your most recent, recently approved master plan, which references the need for, to apply, to apply waivers for additional density, so there's really good jive between and this waiver that we're looking to request, that I think would be a large benefit to, to the community, so. What we did, and I've got two very detailed documents that I submitted along with my plans, the first is a letter that outlined plan changes and actions that, that HEB and our team here enacted to, to address the comments and concerns that came at the meeting. And then the second document, which is even more in depth, is our official waiver request for the density requirement as we discussed at the last meeting, so what I'll do is I'll try to.
Where did you submit that?
I submitted it, I submitted to you on the 18th of December.
Is that different than what I gave them?
I have, I submitted a letter on the 18th that had, a package on the 18th that had a letter, letter and then an official waiver form signed and with a justification document.
I actually have it in my packet.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, great.
Okay.
So to go through the first step, a first step, or the first approach we took was to address the concerns that came up at the meeting, and so we made some plan changes with respect to accommodating vehicular access. We wanted to make sure that delivery trucks could exit, enter and exit the site, we did a, there's a sort of a overlay of a delivery truck on the plan now that shows a typical SU, which is a 40-foot box truck entering the site and exiting the site. We also indicated some additional, we don't have a lot, but some additional snow storage areas on the property as that was a discussion, but we also added a note to the plan that indicated that all snow would be removed within 48 hours of an event, which is, which is a note that we've utilized in several communities in northern New Hampshire. We've also revised the walkways entering the street side, we have now one center walkway that goes into the building versus the three walkways that that come off the sidewalk for access to the building, this allowed for a more, a less open entry to the building, a more concentrated entry, a little bit more green space in the front of the building as well. We also added a single light fixture back to provide some parking lot lighting, it's building, building mounted and provides some lighting right at the entry and in the first spaces at that for the nighttime lighting, and we also added a note to our plan, or updated the note to our plan to saying that all trash and recycling will be managed interior of the building, there is not a dumpster location on the, on the plan, which we discussed last time, but the note on the plan does indicate that they will be managing their trash interior to the building. And in talking to Mark, and I think you can see with the conversation of the, the use that may be taking up two-thirds, we're looking at at least a chunk of this retail space being a low, a low trash producer, and the remaining of the residential spaces will be your common, their common trash-producing places where most of us have to manage our trash at home and bring it where it's gonna go, so that's how we addressed those, we also modified the drainage a little bit and added some roof drains and gutter to the front to ensure that the, the stormwater from the roof didn't fall on the sidewalk. Then we directed that drain to, to a drywell on Maple Street to ensure that it infiltrates and gets out of the way, and so we're reducing, or at least if there was a concern about the potential icing of sidewalks in the winter with, and so on, we've, we've addressed that with the redirection of our redirection of our runoff. Another conversation that was had at the meeting was our coordination with NHDOT. We did not need a driveway permit because we're not gaining access to DOT, but there was some consideration as to whether DOT had jurisdiction. I spoke with Jim McMahon at, at the DOT district, he indicated that we do not in fact need a driveway permit. We do when construction starts, and this is typically an application that comes from the contractor, they require an excavation permit, and this would be solely for the sidewalk upgrades that they are, that DOT is in support of, that actually takes, there's a tip-down like a driveway in front of this property, we're looking to raise that up and just make a normal sidewalk with a reveal in front of the project, so DOT would just look for this project to apply for an excavation permit for that activity. And then again, they indicated that they would be in support of that. So in addition to those plan changes that were in an effort to address the concerns that the board had, but also to bring our plan, you know, in conjunction with, with the ordinance a little bit stronger, the waiver request for the project, you know, the outline for the waiver request was in the section, you know, 6B4D indicates that if all other zoning requirements are met, the board may waive the dimensional requirements, so the dimensional requirement that we're looking for a waiver from here is the density requirement that would, that would, for the commercial spaces and the residential would require 90,000 square feet of raw property, so we're looking for a potential waiver, or we're looking for a waiver, not a potential waiver, we're officially asking for a waiver from that dimensional requirement for density. Request, I have a long and I would say detailed justification, and I just wanted to explain my approach for providing that justification, density is typically a zoning, it's a zoning consideration, whereas, you know, parking and stuff like that is more of a site plan regulation consideration, so the easiest way to provide a justification for a waiver for this density requirement was to take a look at the way the zoning board looks at special exceptions and really outlines all the details that need to be in consideration for you as a board to make a decision as to whether or not this project warrants a waiver from the density requirement to provide much-needed residential density in the Village Center. I could go through them in depth, it would probably take me another 10 minutes to hit all of those. I can do that if you want me to. I'm hoping that you read them so that I don't have to go in depth and maybe we can have a conversation, but I would like at this point to ask the pleasure, what the pleasure of the board is.
Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
I'm willing to do either.
OJ, every hand up, are you muted?
My, my suggestion, Josh, would be to, to review them briefly.
Sure.
You know, we have two issues here tonight, and I think together, altogether, we've got 22 attachments sent by email, of which this is one, I read it, but I did not read all like 300 pages of my documents.
Totally understand.
Help us all understand.
Totally understand, OJ, I appreciate that, so I'll try to breeze through this and hit the, the points, but the special exception criteria that I use as sort of the, the framework for this does outline a lot of different opportunities, but one of the things that I did at the beginning in, in what the waiver request was for, I indicated that we're looking for a waiver from density. And I also indicated that the most recent iteration of the town master plan references for rental housing and multifamily units housing local workers in several locations in the housing and neighborhood sections of your master plan. The final part of the master plan specifically references the town zoning ordinance should provide some flexibility of design and layout for residential units and mixed in, in established commercial areas. So this waiver request, as you're thinking your way through whether to accept it, it should be understood that it is, we were excited to really dive into the master plan and find that this waiver request really does fit what, what your vision or what the community's vision for Lincoln is. So that was sort of one of the initial justifications that we put in there. So that, that's outlined there, and then the specific ordinance that we're asking for the waiver from, flexibility. So the first, the first major section of the, the justification is that the site is suitable for the use, structure development and so on, so in this section, there were several subsections being adequate usable space, adequate access. And to address those two in particular upfront, we were able to get all of the town's requirements from the site plan or the land, land use planning ordinance into our site other than the density, so we have the parking that's needed, we can address snow storage with a modification of how we handle, we can handle trash, we meet a lot, the lot coverage calculations. So we have all of, all of those things in consideration. Adequate access was something I addressed in the site or the initial conversation here that, that we all addressed in our first meeting, we won't go into a whole lot more detail there. Another subsection is absent, absence of environmental issues or any other of the special zoning districts, and this, this lot isn't in a floodplain or have wetlands or any of those things. The, the next large section is that the proposed use is appropriate for the site. It, one of the subsections is parking scheme, we've provided that to you, we meet the parking design ordinances, traffic circulation, again, we discussed that, open space, we meet the lot coverage ordinance as it's, as it sits.
What percentage of the lot are you covering, sir?
What's that?
What percentage of the lot are you gonna be covering?
Hold on, let me grab that for you, right here on the plan. Our lot coverage for this project as proposed, bear with me here, zoom in, the allowable lot coverage is 80% in this, in this area or the zone, and our lot coverage is 78 and a half, so we are under the 80% lot coverage. So open spaces is acceptable for this, for this zoning district. Fencing and screening, there is an existing fence that goes around the perimeter of the property, we are removing that fence, moving and then putting a new stockade fence around, so we are providing that. Talked about lighting impact, I showed a light spread on my new plan that comes from that one fixture, the show where the zero-foot candle spread is in the parking lot, which essentially shows that there's no air exiting that parking lot and going on to abutting properties. The next large section in my justification was the proposed use, structure development will not have a negative impact on the immediate neighborhood. First one is that the, it's architecturally compatible, you know, there's a lot of varying architectural considerations in this part of the center, and I would say that when you take the, the one of the building that's relatively rundown and another building, and you look at the architecture that we put together, I think Alba's done a good job in finding something that is definitely. Alba's done a good job in, in finding something that is definitely an upgrade in, in the neighborhood, the village center. The use won't disturb the tranquility of the district. I mean, it's a residential use with commercial space. It's pretty consistent with the uses that are in the area. It's not incompatible or undesirable is another section. It won't produce noise, vibration, dust and glare. So these are all, there was another lighting consideration which I, I've already addressed. These are all things that, you know, they're in there for the special exception and as a justification of a request that we most definitely meet here. And, and you know, as I was going through, I was getting excited again about, no, right, we're meeting the master plan requirement, you know, the master plan's goal, and we're trying to do something that's a positive residential opportunity for the village center. A large section about the traffic access, talking about no excessive trips with respect to the definition of excessive trip generator through the ITE, neither residential uses nor commercial uses in this type are going to be defined as excessive trip generators. They're going to be your standard residential uses and your standard, you know, commercial uses, whether it's office space, self-care or any other use in that area. And then no other undue nuisance or hazard, there's plenty of access to the property. And then the last, yeah, the second to last section has some subsections would be the availability to public services and facilities, fire protection. We're in the village center, streets, we're in the village center, we've got those, parks, we're in the village center, there, you know, the amenities, schools, the amenities that residential uses would, would look to and the commercial uses would look to withdraw in to the commercial space are all available in the village center. That's why it's the village center, and that's why this, this mixed-use commercial residence is a strong fit for what we're proposing here. And then the fine, the final, final one seems redundant with all the other ones, but the proposed use, structure or development is appropriate for the site. We meet the site layout requirements, all of them except density. We're, we're asking for this waiver as a means of providing not only commercial space, but mixed-use residential on small lots in the village center, which is a consist, which is consistent with the master plan. So that's, that's the basis of what we changed, and that's the basis for our justification for the waiver. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Mark?
I'd just like to ask, first of all, it's an excellent presentation, and I'd like to say that I think that any plan for that property, which involves a great deal of thinking and architectural planning and consideration for all the factors that you mentioned, will automatically become a leading candidate for a good project for Lincoln. Because I, I have confidence that those, the, the combination of intent and detailed approach to satisfying the requirements of the land use ordinance, presuming that this is the one that we're going to be voting on, I guess, is, is in principle a good thing. Question that I have is, how sensitive is your plan to the requirement for exactly six residential units? I mean, if, if somebody were to propose to you that you reduce the number somewhat in order to decrease the intensity, if you will, of the variance, is that something that you can economically consider in good faith or not?
I'll let, I'll let Mark address, or address that.
Mark, that's a great question. It's, it's very sensitive. It's, it's very thin, it's very speculative. I'm taking a lot of risk to bring this to the town of Lincoln. And it, it's, to answer your question, it's a, it's a, it's a waiver that we're looking for, for six residential units. If you were to ask for four, I, I wouldn't really understand the justification because it's the same.
A random number, I'm just asking, you know, I haven't done any planning or a projection of costs and revenues or anything of the sort, just a general.
From a business perspective, from a developer perspective, it's very thin right now.
Fair enough.
Paul, did you ever hand up?
Yeah, I did. At one time we talked about the availability of sewer and the fact that, and I think it was the town has a request, if I'm not mistaken, that they have to, this would have to be proven, the town would have proved that this application would meet the requirement or that there is enough sewer capacity available in order to do this, because it's a new project. Maybe OJ could chime in here and... Does the town have that requirement, OJ?
We've not, we don't have any ordinance related to that. It's been discussed at various planning board meetings of which you've been to. I don't know if they've, they've looked at the, the capacity. I know that they're, as part of this project, they're tearing down and eliminating two structures with water and sewer to them. I don't know what the increase in capacity would be.
My, my comment is more reference the Board of Selectments meeting that all future projects would have to make sure that there was capacity to be able to, for the sewer to be able to be brought to the town. And I, I thought that was for any, any development, any future development because of the hotels that were coming online, that any future projects would need to build, prove that the town had the demand as far as pipes, you know, as far as the capacity flowing through the pipes, as far as what was available at the treatment plant.
Yeah, and I, I guess, I don't know where the line gets drawn because we, we aren't doing that for single families. We are doing that for, or we are going to request that for, for larger developments. I don't, I, I don't have an answer.
Yeah, I need to draw, I, I just asked the question because it was brought up last time, and, and I think this project was referenced. And I thought, what you said, and I thought, I, I thought the board, and I'm not sure whether it was a planning board or the Board of Selectment said that this, this project would be an example of one that would have to show that the pipe sizing was going to meet it. Now, like, you know, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought that that was the case. And, and I agree with you, there are some current demands onsite for water and sewer that should be allowed to go with a property, but any new demands, I'm not, I mean, I don't, I thought that was the reason for, you know, having this checked out prior to make sure that it would, so that, you know, there would be an engineering study done to be able to quantify. Wasn't there an issue with the pipe sizing coming down through the, the main street somewhere along this line with locations?
The, the sewer capacity restriction as far as piping goes is on Main Street on that side of the road. But I don't know what, what, you know, if it's in front of this unit or uphill or downhill from it, I, I don't know where it is.
Neither do I, neither do I, and that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, engineers were, were, were looking into that in relation to, I believe it was the Fairfield end application up the street.
Yeah, and, and that's why I said there, there was some, there's some questioning about that, and when we discussed this project somewhere along the line, it was brought up. I'm not sure was the applicant was even made aware of it. I'm not sure if they knew about it, I, I don't know.
Josh, has any sewer capacity, pipe sizing, exploration been done?
No, that was not brought to our attention at, at any point. And, you know, it's something that we could, we can, we can work with the community on, you know, we, we have public, theoretically, there's public infrastructure in the road. By RSA, you're required to hook up to it. So we, we assumed that we'd have that, that ability. Now, you know, I, I don't want this to derail the conversation because there's, there's questions that, that haven't been answered, but, you know, that it could be a condition approval on a project like this that, that that gets hashed out with the, the community prior to construction or something along those lines, as it would be required if that came, if it came to that point.
I think Ron has his hands up.
Yep.
Yeah, so I believe the Fairfield, the engineer firm had determined that at the entrance to Church Street is the pinch point between the two manholes at the entrance to Church Street, the undersized pipe that's there. So I think Mr. Styles or his engineer could contact me head away and get the information on that.
That would be good, that would be good for them to do, I think.
Stuart, was that a, a box that was checked? I feel like one of the early conversations was we need to call the town sewer department, and I, I thought it was Josh, but was, did someone make that phone call and check that box? I thought that was already a, a non-issue like the DOT.
No, I think it was similar, similar, similar to Josh's interpretation that, you know, that would be an engineered coordinated item, you know, when construction happens. But, you know, there's the, there is the ability to connect to the, the town's existing infrastructure, and if there are off-site adaptations needed, that would just be part of the coordinated engineering of construction.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would require, yeah. Yeah, would, would require to be checked into because the last thing we would want to do would be to build something like this and find out that there creates a problem in the town's infrastructure, you know, so. I know there was some questions with what's, and I think the whole thing came up based upon what was currently, has currently been approved or is in the works and what's new. So that's, that's where the, when I looked at the, the flow and, and the size of the pipes and the sewer infrastructure and the water, they were looking at what was currently, what currently has been approved with the town to be built. And, and, and they thought that they, you know, that they really need to, people needed to, wanted to build onto that and add on to that would need to show that this, the pipe sizes and stuff like that would take it. I don't think there's an issue with the sewer lagoon, so to speak, on a project of this size. I think the, the more concern was the sizing of the pipes on Main Street. Because I thought, you know, given what was already been approved, and there's a lot that would flow down that way, given the, the hotel and Forest Ridge and a lot of those things, that the size was of concern in, in certain locations.
Sorry. Could I add, could I add a consideration there? So one of the things that would, that would come about from a study of the sewer would be off-site improvements, would be necessary upgrades to the sewer or so on, those types of things that would not impact our onsite improvements. It wouldn't impact our stub to the main, it wouldn't impact any of those things that are specific to site development that, that we're applying for here. I would implore the, the board to consider a conditional approval that would go final once we've addressed that, so the board could then make their vote, say this is conditionally approved as long as we gain either a, a letter that says there's capacity and we're not going to impact at that pinch point, or there's an agreement for off-site improvements if they're necessary. You know, just get the okay from the, the town that the, that we're able to connect to the sewer. It, it would be good because then we could close the door on the site plan for the most part, say, yeah, we, we covered, if, if we get to that point, we covered everything else, let's look for additional approval, and one of the conditions be, be that, that we have to, we have to at least answer that question as to what's going to be required, if anything.
Paul?
Did we receive any comments or letters or anything from any abutters to this property about the, about the proposed construction or development?
No, you just have the three letters of support from employers, nearby employers, Dennis Ducharme, the Lahoots, and one other one, oh, Moon's, Jay Scambio.
I, I do see one, at least one abutter in the audience, so once we open up public pa, public comment, maybe he'll have something to say. Joe, we had to unmute. Joe, unmute.
You're muted, Joe.
No, you're muted. You're still muted. Push his face back.
There you go.
There you go.
No?
Nope. We still can't hear you.
How about now?
Now I can hear you.
Yep.
Okay. If you remember right, when Hampton Inn was coming out of Main Street, they couldn't, one of the big problems was the sewer line was restricted from by the right age, when they had the right age down to the lagoon. Has that been addressed? It hasn't been addressed, we still have a big problem.
Veronica, do you have an answer to that, please?
I'm sorry, what? No, the Hampton Inn has not done anything because they're, they haven't been moving forward.
Not the Hampton Inn they're going to do, because there was a problem with the sewer line from the Hampton Inn down to the sewer, because it was too small, it was restricted. The town is supposed to be looking to make it bigger, has that been addressed?
No, it hasn't, because the Hampton Inn hasn't gone forward with the project.
But does that still run to the same pipe from this one?
I, I believe.
Ask Ron, Ron is much more knowledgeable.
I believe, I believe the pipe for the Hampton Inn is on the opposing side of the project that's before you now. So it's a different pipe that runs through their property there that had issues. But the Hampton Inn engineers had identified that between the two manholes at the entrance of Church Street, that the pipe was undersized, that wouldn't meet the requirements of the Hampton Inn, and their engineers' flow calculations for the size building and how many rooms and bathrooms and all that.
Did you mean the Fairfield?
Fairfield, I'm sorry. Yeah, Fairfield, up at the entrance, Forest Ridge.
Joe, you all said that? God, you can't hear you again. No, not yet.
God damn.
We heard that.
Probably hear more for the night, so let's see a couple of computers running through the middle.
Do you have any other?
Yes. I think this building and the parking is too tight in the back, and I don't see enough handicap parking big enough to accommodate the building. Enough they have.
Josh, can you review your parking? How many parking spaces do you have?
We have eighteen.
It's going to be much larger because of handicap.
We have eighteen parking spaces with one of them being a handicap accessible parking space. The ADA.
That's not enough.
The ADA requirements outlined by the, the federal government, Kate, that for a parking lot of twenty-five parking spaces or fewer requires one ADA parking space, and then there's ratios that go up from there. So Americans with Disabilities Act with the parking lot layout as presented, and the town's parking regulations.
Because I, I went in back with my car into the parking places, tried turning around in the radius, you have listed out, and saw what time to turn around, you're showing off straight parking, I mean, for unloading. If they unload, they get driving the, all the Sean's parking lot to come back in to back into it.
We've, we've shown, we've shown a turning movement for a forty-foot truck that can pull in, head in, park in the center lane, and back out onto Maple Street and then pull forward, utilizing the American or the ASHTO requirements for, for traffic movement. So the models have been created by the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials. We utilize those templates, which is an industry standard in New Hampshire, but a lot around the country. The parking lot space meet the town requirements, both in, it has a square footage, but they meet standard depths and widths for, for typical parking spaces, and the aisle widths are standard for a parking lot of this nature. So I, 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 in my professional opinion, the parking lot meets a standard parking lot design for this type of use, including meeting the American with Disabilities Act as well as ASHTO turning. For this type of use, including meeting the American with Disabilities Act as well as actual turning movements for vehicular or for pedestrian vehicles. And the likely loading vehicle for this property.
I first still think it's not enough.
Josh, if I could ask you. Um, there's Josh, right from HEB?
Yes, sir.
So, so when I look at your, your radiuses for, for turning and getting in there, uh, to do the offloading of your, your truck. And, and the parking and the unloading zone. My concern or question with that is, um, you're blocking one, two, three, four. You know, you're probably, if you have a truck in there, that's, that's offloading, you're, you're literally blocking. The space pretty much for at least four cars, as long as everyone can get, pull over to the right-hand side of them and to get out. And I'm not sure about the, the line of sight to be able to get out in there. I was concerned a little bit about the unloading zone for that truck and what kind of, uh, impact it would have on. On park cars, ability for them to get out, the safety of pedestrians. I mean, it seems like it's a real confined area there when you're trying to offload a, you know, a vehicle.
Yeah, I agree with you. I agree with you, Paul. There's a, there's a couple of considerations there too. If you talk, if you think about what, um, Dr. Joe talked about earlier. Um, if he, if they end up taking up two-thirds of that, of that space, it's unlikely that a, a loading vehicle is even going to be necessary for that kind of commercial use. Um, so we don't know is what one-third or possibly two-thirds of that commercial space could, uh, would be now. You know, this truck that I've shown here could be a Cisco delivery truck that's bringing food to a restaurant. Um, it could be, uh, a UPS truck that is, or FedEx truck or whatever, that's dropping off packages for a board shop or a ski shop or something like that. We don't. We don't know what's there. Um, typical delivery for commercial uses don't occur during business hours. You know, I guess you find Cisco sometimes parked in the middle of. Middle of Main Street, but at least we're off Main Street. Um, in, in some cases, I think some of your businesses down there don't have the off-street ability for those trucks. And we have it here in North Conway too, where you drive through town and you've got a. Eighteen wheeler parked in the middle of Route sixteen and, you know, this opportunity, the uses that are definitely proposed, limit the need for deliveries for sure. Um, but we will have, there will be probably a short inconvenience for, uh, for people. And if the, the residences, they'll probably get to understand when those deliveries are coming. And if they're patrons, you know, who, you know, some of them may be not even parking in the parking lot if they're using the facility, they might park on the street, which we're not including our parking count. Um, there's a minor.
I, I guess my concern. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm good. I'm done.
Okay, Paul.
I guess my concerns, Josh, are that, you know, it. As you just said, you, you're really not going to know what commercial spaces are going to be there. It could be Dr. Joseph, it could be. It could be a bakery. It could be whatever you, you know, whatever is suitable. So we kind of got a, you kind of got to design it for whatever the, you know, maybe the worst case scenario or the most named use would be somewhere along that line. Um, and I, I, I just. I see trucks that are parked on Main Street to make deliveries. I know the, the Maple Street. Uh, residents are very sensitive to vehicles being parked on the road. Um, and having to go around them.
If I could just, if I could just jump in here for one second, Paul, I, I could tell you what's not.
Well, hold on. Paul, you're all, you're all done?
Yeah, I guess so. That's fine. Yeah, marketing, I, I'm just trying to relay some of the stuff that I, you know, that I see.
I could tell you what's not going to be in one of those commercial spaces and that's a restaurant. I have no desire to lease to a restaurant. So that in and of itself is going to eliminate any Cisco trucks. My vision is that there may be a FedEx truck that arrives at ten or ten-thirty, as Josh was implying. And if there is a need for any large deliveries. I, I can't imagine, uh, Herb Lahoots would be upset with letting us utilize that space. I've talked to him. Over the course of time, he seems like a very reasonable individual. But I don't think we're going to need it. The ideas, the visions that we have for the commercial, taking the residential out of it. But the ideas and the visions that I have for the commercial space will not require. The deliveries that, that you're seeing as a, as a problem. I can assure you of that.
So, so then I would just continue on to say that, you know, good contracts and good agreements make good friends. So that, you know, there needs to be something in writing in states, what's going to be able to go in there and what can't so that. Say ten years down the road, fifteen years down the road, you sell the, the building and the land and someone else comes in and says, hey, I want to put. Clear the whole bottom floor. We're going to put a big restaurant.
Yeah, he's not getting approval for that restaurant use at the moment. Let me see.
I mean, we've already, we've already discussed this with the.
Yeah, I mean, he's getting approved for retail space, not a restaurant, not a restaurant. So he'd have to come in for site name review again if he was coming into a restaurant.
Well, it's retail and consumer services, I think. It's all the same category.
Yeah, it, it is. And, and, and I think that we, we gotta be, I just want to make sure that we're designed for the right thing.
Okay, OJ, have your hand up?
Yeah, um. A restaurant is considered a retail use, but the requirements for a restaurant. Are vastly different than, than a retail, retail commercial use.
Correct.
For, for, for parking and, and other issues. So, so, uh, you know, Jim was right that, that. If he's ever going to use this for, for, for a restaurant, he would have to come back to the planning board and apply for a change of use. And at that point, he would have to prove where the Cisco truck is going to go and how many tables and how many parking spaces. And I mean, I don't see that getting approved based on, on current, current regulations. Um, but that's not what he's asking for. So I don't even think we should be discussing it. It's not a restaurant. We don't have to talk about what if. You know?
Okay. Joe, you have something to add? Paul, go ahead. You can finish up.
I'll go ahead and let Joe.
Okay, Joe. No, all right. I saw Alba Architect with his hand up first. So Josh, go ahead.
What are you talking to? Call me.
I, I just, just to, just to speak to the uses there, um, the, the land use planning ordinance doesn't define the difference between retail and restaurant. However, the parking requirements imply that they are different uses. So I would agree with, because there, there's a parking for retail. For restaurants. So I would agree.
Them as different uses, even though they're not.
Yeah, so.
They're listed on the land use chart as a different use.
Okay, so that's, uh, that we'd have to come back to the board for a change.
Joe, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did several times.
Okay.
Anyway, remember to the parking. You have eight, you have marked off eighteen parking places, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's two breach units upstairs, that's twelve. And you have three units downstairs. There's two for each one downstairs. If you include customers, employees, that's not enough.
Hey, Josh, you address that?
Yeah, the parking calculations for the town of Lincoln outline three, uh, one parking space with three hundred square feet of retail. That provides us with nine spaces. Um, the three retail units also require one space for every, one additional space. We'll call it an employee space. So that's another three. That gets us to twelve. Uh, six residential uses for a mixed development is at one space per unit. Which gets us to six more, which would be eighteen total spaces. So as the, as the land use planning ordinance is outlined, our parking requirements meet the land use planning ordinance.
Well, actually, if you look at page twenty-one. Says the board has to waive that and require one per residential unit. It's not automatic.
My bottle, please.
Sorry, Joe.
Can you hear me, Jim?
I can hear you. Go ahead.
My assumption is that you have to have two parking places for each apartment, right?
Right.
And there's three, there's three stores down below.
Yeah.
That's six. Six and twelve is eighteen. If you have one or two employees down below, that doesn't leave much for, uh, for, for customers coming in. Since we don't allow off-street parking, Main Street parking. Think the parking is pretty tight.
Okay.
Then we get, then we're not allowing much for stolen mobile.
Well, they said they're going to remove the snow within forty-eight hours of a storm.
When you get a two-foot storm, they lose half their parking.
Okay, well, I'm going to read from page twenty-one. It says, where the development will provide for mixed uses, including residential units. The planning board may waive the two parking space requirement per residential unit and only require one additional space per residential unit. If the planning board finds that the off-street parking proposed is adequate for the intended use and substantially meets the purposes of the disordnance.
What off-street parking?
That's what we're proposing is off-street parking.
Yeah, talking off-street parking in the parking lot.
So to.
Town parking lot? They can't park you overnight.
No.
Oh, Joe, the parking lot in back of the building, these two proposing.
And so I would, I would indicate that this is perfect and we, we've utilized this and it's actually, there's studies out there that show. That, um, residential uses that are in village centers that are close to amenities. Um, typically require fewer parking spaces per residential use. So this would be an, uh, an acceptable. Use for reduced parking standard or a, a traditionally an acceptable use for a reduced parking standard, which is why we applied the one. Per residential for mixed use. Not only is it mixed use in this particular structure. But the entire area of the village center is very much mixed use, um, with amenities and everything in close proximity to. The proposed development that we're providing here. And I know that we aren't allowed to count. On street parking, but I think it would, I'd be remiss to say that we're not going to have a single user of that business. On the first floor. No, not the residences, but somebody who's going to be a user for a day visit to see Dr. Joe. Um, who's not going to park on the street in the available parking spaces. So not only are we providing the parking in the back that meets this one space per residential plus the requirement for retail. We, there is the availability of some parking in the vicinity of this building. Uh, obviously, I understand that that's randomly. I understand that we're not doing overnight parking for residential uses. But there is some additional parking capacity at times at the facility.
Do you feel you need to ask for a waiver from the parking requirements?
I, I did not. I, I felt like that was, it reads as though it's a conversational piece versus a, a waiver. Um, because it's, it's written as a parking requirement. So I, I didn't see it as a waiver piece, to be honest with you. I saw it as the, the board would be able to approve the parking as presented, but. Um. The way I, I interpreted it, but I, I, you know, I'm, it, this is, it's your ordinance and, and I don't know how you've addressed it in the past.
Okay, Joe.
I don't think there is enough parking because there's no, there's no storms. There'd be parking on the street all over the place after two big storms. They've been here when they've had a thirty-six, thirty-six inch storm. They'll get moved in forty-eight hours. And secondly. If you have twelve hundred for the apartments, if you, if you only have one for each, each, each store down below, that makes it fifteen. So you're not going to have any more than three customers on the property on all three stores. It's going to be kind of hard. The third, another point I want to make is when the water comes off the roof of this building, you look at the facade of the plants. Starting, starting the highest one, how much water and what velocity is going to come off and land on the sidewalk of the street? People walking by.
Okay, Josh, you have your hand up?
Yeah, we, I addressed this in the beginning of my presentation. We added a gutter to the front of the building. That outlets to the Maple Street side that discharges to a private place where it's infiltrated.
Okay, Paul.
Josh, um, I've had some experiences with gutters and stuff like that. Um, living in a north country, gutters are about as useless as, I don't know what, unless they're heated and well. Well, well-maintained and well taken care of. And even at that, they're, you know, they're, when they're down spots go underground, they tend to freeze a lot. So you. You have to use a lot of heat tapes and I'm not saying it's not possible to be done. I just want to make you aware that they are not a very practical application in the north country.
Okay, Josh.
Yeah, and, and we understand that too, which is why we reduced the number of walkways. Um, and I'll let Stuart jump in here too. Reduced number of walkways to add more green space and, and potential drip area on the front of the building as well. So instead of having the sidewalk in the front and then three, you know, six-foot wide walkways going in, we have one center access point. But I'll jump over to Stuart here, uh, to let him address that architectural feature if that's okay.
All right, yeah, Stuart, go ahead, please. Wait, hold on. Let, let Joe finish. Joe.
My big problem is nothing. My big problem is with the water coming off the roof, even gutters, they overflow. The water be coming out their sidewalk. I'm not worried about people going into your store. I'm worried about people walking in front of the store. Down the street. Of course, I'm still worried people getting hurt going in. But if we don't address that problem, all that much water surface coming off the roofs and with the high velocity, it's not going to be contained by the gutters. Must have some awful big gutters to do that.
Okay. Stuart.
Yeah, I would just add, so there, there's kind of a couple of things going on here too. First of all, the actual drip edge of the building. Is, is five feet back from the sidewalk. It's not actually dripping edge on the sidewalk. And that, that meets obviously the town's setback requirements. But also if you look at, for example, the, the northeast elevation, which is the Maple Street elevation. You'll see there's kind of a cascading effect from the roofs. The, the main roof, uh, allows passage onto, uh, the lower porch roof, which will internalize passage to the gutters. So, so there's an inherent built-in, uh, break line effect of the rainwater. That, that doesn't actually come from the majority of the roof all the way down hitting the sidewalk. Uh, you'll also notice there's two cross gables on that Main Street elevation. So I'm more than confident we can manage the runoff. Uh, from two potential locations at the high elevation and then as it cascades onto the porch roof elevation. And then into, from there into a gutter. So we can, we can manage that and infiltrate that water accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Paul.
Stuart, um. I, I didn't see any type of a landscaping, uh, plan or screening plan a- along with this. Um, landscaping and screening is, is very important, especially in an area like this where it's backed up to a, um, some residential areas. Um, landscaping and, uh, in particular would also help with some of the water runoff. Um. Was there, did you plan on, did someone plan on doing a landscaping, what I see, most of the, um, trees and so forth, shrubs. Uh, are going to be removed. Uh, we just had a discussion and on the planning board not too long ago. And we'd like to bring back, see some of the, you know, some, some landscaping and green spaces coming back to, to town instead of being so. You know, barren. Um, and, and I, I, I didn't see anything here that represents any of that.
Uh, Stuart and Josh, each have your hand up. You want to go first?
Stuart, Stuart, go ahead.
So I was just going to add that, you know, that we deliberately banked the building as far away from Maple Street as we could to allow that food buffer. Between Maple Street sidewalk and the edge of the building. While, while we haven't resolved what the landscape would be, there is opportunity there. To, to add vegetation and potential screening in that location, which I think, you know, softens the whole corner. Of, of Maple Street, both as you're coming north and south on, sorry, east and west on Main Street. Uh, and then the rear, as Josh highlighted earlier, there is that stockade fence, which will act as a screening device. Uh, from this building to the, the neighboring properties.
Well, my concern, my concern with that stockade fence, Stuart, is that, again, in a north country, and I think Joe's talked about it, is. A snow removal. So you're only going to have a limited space to put your snow. And it's going to get pushed up against the stockade fence and within a year. Maybe two, that stockade fence, unless it's built with a lot of steel verticals, is going to be not very much left of it because. It, it, you know, it, it's going to take some hard maintenance there. It's a hard area. So I, I think you'll want to consider that as well.
Hey, Josh.
Speaking to that, Paul, um, you know, we're getting this site plan approved with the stockade fence. So if, if something were to happen to that stockade fence, it's a requirement of the, of the applicant to. We were having conversation about it. So we're, we're committing to having a stockade fence in the areas located on the site plan. So there'd be requirement of the applicant to, to repair it.
And, and if I could just add, I've already spoken to a gentleman who I understand has a tremendous reputation in the area, Rex Calder. As a gentleman who would be doing that for us and I'm hoping he wouldn't damage the stockade fence within a year or two. But, uh, you know, we'd be looking for new snow removals, uh, if you know anybody.
Um. Yeah.
All right, does anyone have anything else? All right, is there a motion to open public comment? Second, I didn't hear a second. I'll second the motion. All in favor, signify by CNI and raise your right hand. I, all right, public comment is open. Any member of the public like to speak? Is there a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close public comment.
Second, OJ, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. Okay. All right, does the board have any other questions? Carol? Did you have something?
Um, no, I'm just, um, I just.
Um, no, I'm just, um, I just wanted to, uh, to let you know that, um, should you approve a project, um, you're, you're gonna probably before the building, we'll have to have Ray, the town engineer, Ray uh, Corber, uh, check the drainage plan and everything. And so that would require an escrow account. I, I just don't want you to be surprised by that. And maybe you'd want to make it contingent on, um, on his approval.
Okay. All right, Paul.
Would this, uh, building be sprinkler, Josh?
Let Stuart answer that. I work on the outside of the building.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Stuart.
Uh, there's no requirement by either the International Building Code or NFPA to sprinkle a building of this size and of this construction type. Uh, so it, it would be potentially an option, although I know the town has concerns over water capacity. Uh, so there is no code requirement to sprinkle the building, uh, based on construction type and square footage.
Is that something that the, that would be able to be considered? The only reason I say that is because the, the parking on the back and if there ever was to be a fire there and with the occupancy there, mixed occupancy that you had, it probably would be a good idea. Um, you know, to give the fire department time to set up on such a small area. They could only set up either on Maple Street, maybe on the side street. But I mean, you know, it, it would be pretty tight and sprinkling would, would definitely um, assist them, give them some time.
Yeah, Paul, I think it could definitely be.
Is Ron there?
He's, he's there, I mean.
Okay.
Stuart, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think it could definitely be a, be a good consideration. Again, just like any off-site adaptations that were discussed as relating to the super system. We would just want to understand and make sure there's adequate water capacity to make that happen. As I said, I'm, I'm familiar that the town is has some potential concerns over water capacity. So that would just be a coordination item with the, with the appropriate departments.
Okay, Joe, do you have a question?
Yeah. On between the commercial property, uh, of the building, the apartment, will there be additional fire protection between the two floors?
Stuart.
Yes, uh, be as, as prescribed within, as I said, both NFPA and IBC, uh, there would be fire separations between any commercial use and residential use, also between any residential to residential use that in itself also has to meet the requirements of a rated assembly. As well as in this particular scenario, the stairwell would have to be a rated vertical enclosure within the building, but all of that would be in line with, with current applicable building codes.
Joe. Go ahead.
Will it be just one stair out, one stair back, one stairwell on the backside or two?
Ju- just one stairwell, that's again. Sorry, just one stairwell. Again, that's all that's required by, by building code.
Paul.
If I could ask Ron Beard to weigh in on this, about sprinkling and then just, he's taking a look at this project and what his thoughts are.
Yeah, obviously, uh, Stuart's pretty well versed with the codes and I, you know, upon approval of this, it's, it's in our land use plan or land use permit that all applicable codes have to be adhered to. You know, New Hampshire adopted codes, so I'll work with the applicant on that if he gets approved.
Do you think that sprinkling is what would be advisable here? I know it came to me, but I understand that. I'm just asking you as fire chief, given the mixtures.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna have to dig into the codes. It's, uh, right now it's six units residential above a commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I definitely would have to review the codes and you know, I wouldn't want to ask the applicant to do something that he's not required to do within the, within the codes.
Okay.
You're not done, Ron?
Excuse me.
Stuart, Stuart, go ahead.
Uh, just a few note on that, the building code would require, uh, a, an automatic monitored fire alarm system. Uh, so you know, that'd be a fully automated system between the commercial and residential units with appropriate uh, enunciation devices, illumination devices and emergency lighting that would be prescribed by code. So at a minimum, uh, the building would be fully alarmed. Um, but the sprinkler discussion would be a kind of coordination item between uh, the client, the town and the appropriate infrastructure.
Okay, Paul.
Although I don't get a vote on this project, I think it's a pretty good project. My only concern about the whole project at all honesty is, is the, the lack of availability of, um, green space area for the, the six apartments. It should, there'll be some children, uh, there. I, I think it would fit the site. I, I, I think it's needed. I think you guys have done a great job presenting it. I just, I am, I'm just concerned about the safety of, you know, there's no place for kids to play there. And that's, to me, that's part of the whole project, you know. The rest of them can be mitigated, moved around, but I, I just, I just get concerned about that. And I, you know, we have no real spaces around there for them and it's, it's a busy main street, as we all know, and it's a busy, uh, Maple Street, as we all know, because of, you know, because of the commercial space, the roof space right beside you. So that corner is a very busy spot and you know, like I said, I don't get a vote, but that's, that's my only really concern.
Okay, thank you. All right. I have one question about the trash. Now, is there gonna be a room for the trash? Or is each tenant gonna be responsible to take out their own trash?
Mark, do you want, I mean, I think it, I think it could be a combination of both. We'd have to look at the, the architecturals. But Mark, do you have a, an action plan for that?
Yeah, the plan would be that the, the, uh, residential units are responsible for their own, that they would be taking it to the local transfer station, that we would have a property manager that would, uh, manage the, the, the spaces below. Excuse me?
Joe, what's that?
I've never seen, I work in several different organizations for the pick picking up trash and removal and such, but they don't have much luck and people taking here the trash where there's both of them.
Yeah, the, the uses that we're looking at are, are, you know, similar to the one I'm sitting in and, and they don't come but once a week.
I got one, I do it three times a week, still not enough.
Yeah, the uses that we're looking at aren't gonna require that.
This is all that, this is apartments.
Sorry?
I take care of apartments as well as commercial. The apartments I take care of, I have to give them twice a week. One place, at one place alone, I take out twenty-four bags of trash, two apartments.
Yeah, the occup- the occupants would be taking care of their own trash, unless they hired a, a company to do it for them, which I don't expect the tenants of these units to do that.
Okay, so we have a couple of things. What's that, Joe?
Just wanna get them to let know what it's in for.
Okay, so they, they, Carol, do you have any final thoughts?
Do I have any thought? Are you talking to me?
You keep lighting up. I don't know if you're trying to get my attention or if it's just background noise. It's.
It's supposed to be background noise.
Okay.
Steve's trying to talk.
What's that?
Steve was trying to talk.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
No, it's me, Steve.
Oh, Steve, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. I can hear you now, go ahead.
Seems, can somebody convince me that there's enough site to do what they want to do on it? I mean, it seems like kinda tight all around to me.
Yeah.
Uh, probably two stories would work a lot better than three in my mind, but I know they have to make some money. It just seems pretty tight all the way around.
Josh.
Can anybody come up with an answer for that?
That was the basis of my justification is that we're able to meet all of the requirements for site layout with the, with the parking and the lock coverage. All of the, um, basically all the checklist items that go along with the site plan for something of this mixed, uh, style. You know, and we, you know, a lot of times you'll find when you're trying to fit too much on a site that you don't, you're not able to hit whatever it's green space or lock coverage requirements. And we are able to hit the, the lock coverage as it's, as it's outlined in the land use planning ordinance. So that's why I think this site is an appropriate use. Um, the map and outlines the need for rental in the village and neighborhood areas. Um, coupled with mixed use to, to make the projects work and to, you know, I was saying it, but to entice developers to take the, the leap, try to, to better the community by providing residential housing, uh, which is obviously much needed in New Hampshire and, and in places like, like Lincoln. We feel that there's adequate space on the, on the parcel to, to meet the requirements of site plan. And you know, if we went two stories, there wouldn't be any more space on the parcel. You know, we'd, maybe you have a couple less parking spaces, but we wouldn't be having a whole conversation, there wouldn't be a whole different conversation about the size of the parcel. So, um, that was the presentation that I gave for the, the waiver justification.
Okay, Mark, have your hand up?
Yeah, I'd just like to break, bring up a point of consideration. First of all, in terms of Paul's concerns about kids playing there. Right, but on the other hand, uh, it's true for us to consider the standards that we have for kids to play. I mean, this is, we have an abundance locations within the town where kids can play.
You're kinda breaking, breaking up a little bit. I don't know if you're away from the mic.
Uh, you know, I can't find my, oh, here's my mic. And it's, it's disconnected. That's my, my bad, sorry about that. I haven't. No, it's not turning on. Okay, I, there it is. Okay. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, um, we have an abundance of playing areas in the town. Grant you that this is the location you would choose if you had all kinds of options. Number one, this is not technically styled as workforce housing. But workforce housing is in general, I tend to, families with children. And there's a large number of people who need to rent properties who do not have children. Perhaps they will not grab it to this location. Number one. Number two, we have zero.
I can't hear Mark very well.
Zero available rental spaces, apartments, et cetera, in general, at almost any given time for people in Lincoln. And, and we have lots of businesses, as, as indicated by the letters of support, that have already been submitted by other people for this project. Every business in town needs able to live in here. And not only is there nothing in town, but there's nothing near town.
I can't, I can't.
I can't hear you, Mark.
I don't know. Um. I, I don't know, hold on a second, Jesus.
Well, I'm.
Ben, just a suggestion, I think it's, I think there's feedback coming from others. If everyone mutes themselves, I think it'll be cleaner.
What's that again?
I, I think there's feedback coming from others on the call. If everyone else could mute themselves, I think it'll be much cleaner.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to start over again?
I think part of the problem is because I'm having trouble speaking for reasons having to do with my own, uh, health. Uh, the, the playground consideration I talked about is particular to Lincoln. We have unbelievable facilities that kids can play in general in Lincoln. Granted, this is not the best location in Lincoln for that, number one. Number two, this is a type of workforce housing. Workforce housing, it's not styled as workforce housing on the application, but it nevertheless will, will add to the supply of workforce housing for the town, which has none, zero, almost zero. Uh, there are zero vacancies in general at any given time in the town of Lincoln and lots and lots of potential employers. Even in a period right, like right now, where demand for a, by, by employers disputed due to the economic situation. God help us when the economy recovers, if there's a vac- a successful vaccination program. There's really nothing in or around town. So this is only six units, but it's still six units more than zero. Uh, and it's a relatively sensitive and careful plan to develop, granted intensely this site. And perhaps it requires a waiver akin to the, the special category that's being submitted to the town soon. I thought we were gonna bring it up at this meeting, the application under the commercial use exemption. But I think that instead of being ultra punctilious about details of parking, I mean, if you go to any town or city on the planet, other than Grafton County, the amount of parking that's available is quite substantial for a building structure of this size. The access for children to areas to play is not only acceptable, but it's excellent. And on a, on a scale of one to ten in the world, the United States, it's way above ordinary standards. And I think that we should either grant an exemption subject to the vote of the town on the, um, on the new land use, uh, uh, commercial use exemption. I forget the terminology carefully, you can help. Or in other, in some other way, try to facilitate the development of this project if we can. Uh, that's my sense worth.
Okay, thank you. So I guess before we go into the site plan, um, we have a couple of things. We have to, you know, grant a waiver of the dimensional requirements. And in order to do that, they have to meet all the other requirements, the ordinance. So I guess the first question is, is the parking situation? Joe, you have something? Oh, I can't hear you. Nope.
Have you read the comments of Peter Malia?
Yes, I have.
Oh, so would that be advisable to have a wait to see in the meeting to April first? So if the restrictions change, should we lift the strictness? We pass the town meeting.
Yeah, I'm calling you.
Right or wrong?
I'm sorry.
That's up to the applicant.
Joe, are you referring to the, uh, restricted multifamily use, the business use that is being proposed for town?
Correct. I don't, you want to wait, you want to go on? That's my opinion is.
Well, uh, there's a timing element for this project for us, but.
Want to find out.
But, but that is also a very different use than what we're proposing here. It, it, it is very restrictive. It's in line with what we're doing, but it actually is much more restrictive in the downside risk that we have associated with this project. Now, our intent, our intent, Joe, is to rent these out on an annualized basis. Absolutely. We're not looking to create a motel hotel. We're not looking to do an Airbnb. Those units are intended to be rented annually. However, in looking at that and the letter from council, we did see that. It was sent to Josh. And we did analyze that. But what I'm not sure you would understand is downside risk. Again, we're coming in with a very, very thin margined project. If we're unable to condo those at any time in the future, that takes away a huge hedge to the risk of the project. So I'm not sure if this is a location that makes sense. I'd like to talk about it. I mean, if we're here and we have time, I'd like to talk about whether or not you view this as a site that would make sense for the restricted use that isn't yet approved by the town. I love it. I love the writing of it. I don't know that it works at this project under the certain, um, the, the way it is designed today, because there is a design to shelter some of that thin margin risk that we, we have. I think what you're proposing for town meeting and the, and the folks of Lincoln is something for a site larger to create many more units. And again, I, I think it's well crafted. I think it makes a lot of sense. I don't know that it makes sense on this site unless, unless the board is open to more than six units.
I can't see that.
We have six units in front of us, so we can't really speculate. Joe, go ahead.
This one, fine. Are you planning on minimizing these units? If so, it doesn't, it'll be one ownership of the entire building.
The intent right now is exactly what we're presenting. Long-term residential units with a commercial component on the first floor. However, as designed, we don't, we can't see the future. I don't think anybody saw COVID coming this year. I don't think anybody can predict what's going to happen in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Although there is the possibility that the market could shift. Although there is the possibility that the market could shift. In developing through a pro forma with our lenders and our equity partners, you have to be able to. Hedge some of that risk. So right now, hedging that downside risk gives us the ability to separate ownership. Right? To pay off some of the debt if things don't go the way they're supposed to go. Again, there's a lot of risk associated with putting a development like this in your town. I want to do that. I really want to do that. But to take on certain restrictions that aren't really on the books right now. I would be very open to the conversation if that were on the books and there were more units. Available on that site. Or maybe there's a future site that we would be looking at to do this. Again, I saw your meetings. I viewed them. I read your regulations. I think it's well crafted. I hope it passes town meeting. But again, that's not before us right now unless it's before us and we kind of straddle in between what's here now. And what you're proposing, but we would have to do it through a waiver of your existing density requirements.
Right. And the other thing is you've changed, um, you're proposing a change in the density. Uh, the percentage of lot coverage too for village center. I think you're reducing the 80% down to 70%. So.
Right.
You know, there's a downside there as well for them.
Right. So we wouldn't even comply with the open space requirement under that new regulation unless. You know, right now, again, today, we're talking about what's on your books now versus what's going to be there. We could be restricting ourselves voluntarily under your regulations, but. I would suggest that it would require more than six units for it to actually make sense to do that.
I I understand. So basically, it'd be one ownership, entire building is a present.
Correct. And that's the intent for the very near future, if not the long term. This is a project that I want to have in retirement. But. The way it's designed right now, it has the ability to hedge that risk and sell those units separately so that. I don't go bankrupt.
Well, if you sell the units separately, that come under a whole different set of regulations for subdivision and density requirements.
I understand, but again, right now, what's in front of us is what my intent is unless we're talking about. The business use and and trying to figure out a way to to make that work. But right now, the. Application that we're asking you to vote on is for the waiver of the density for these six units as they are written in your regulations now.
Okay, Stuart, you have your hand up?
Yeah, it was really just just a footnote on the on the condo or potential for condo. That's that's not being asked for right now. And correct me if I'm wrong, that would be a subdivision under the town's regulations. So that would require. Future planning board approval to actually turn these into condos. So. In my mind, it's not even a question right now because it's not being asked and it's subsequent future approval on the board.
Thank you. Mark?
I just want to make clear that my comments about housing and so on did not apply. To the subsequent comments that Mr. Stiles made, that in in my view. Changed the whole category of consideration. And while it's true that it is a subdivision to then condo them. And the condoing is not the main issue because it doesn't matter as much, uh, to me, whether people own them or rent them. But I I would think that making them into, uh, long-term rentals and. Unrestricted housing, take them out of the workforce housing considerations altogether. And make them economically unaffordable to the people that we were just talking about. All of my prior comments have now become irrelevant.
I I don't think so, Mark. I mean, I I think you bring up a good point. We're trying to develop housing for long-term. Or workforce. That's nice. That's really nice, that they could be proud to live in. And if things did not go well and we had to come back to the board and say, pretty please, things aren't going well. We need to convert these to condominium ownerships so that we can mitigate. Our downside, right? Again, as a developer, as I sit here, there is substantial risk. And what we're trying to do is leave that door open. Now, your well-crafted language for this new use would eliminate that. So we would have to go back to the drawing boards. And redesign the project. So. I guess the question becomes, is this a project? Is that what you want us to do? Would, is that a vision that you would have for this site? If so, would you be open to the idea of more units?
Sir, I think, you know, we really got to consider the application before us and not speculate.
Okay.
Yeah. OJ, do you have your hand up?
I I was just gonna, uh, I guess reiterate what what Mark Stiles just said in regards to Mark Erman's. Comments that that Mark Erman made some very valid points, but I don't think that. The mention of a potential future condominiumization of this project. At all, that's somewhat what what Mark Erman said. I mean, this, as Stuart said, this is not an application for condos. If they want to do it, they're going to have to come back. And and when they do come back, not when. If sometime in the future they came back, they're going to have to adhere to whatever zoning regulations are in force at that time. Now, if this project, I mean, if this zoning amendment passes in in March, it's going to make that even more difficult for them to condominiumize the unit. So. I don't think we should be talking about this because it's not what they've applied for. We don't know when they might change it. And we don't know what the rules are going to be when and if they ever do change it. So so let's stop talking about this and get back to what we need to talk about. Did, have they met all of the, um, requirements except for the the density? And and if so, then let's talk about granting them a waiver for density.
So the first thing we have to check is the parking. So are we ready to move to that and discuss that? Okay, I'm going to poll the board. Paul, you have one more question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure you 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 don't lose sight of the the sewer issue. When when you're giving your, giving your final approval, please.
Say that again. Don't lose sight of what?
Don't lose sight of the making sure that the sewer capacity and, you know, the pipe and stuff like that when you're given your. When you're deliberating that you incorporate that into your final decision.
That'll be condition of approval, granted. All right. So I'm going to poll the board. Steve, you feel they met the parking requirements of the town of Lincoln?
You talking to me, Jim?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I think I think it'd be okay.
Okay. Mark?
Well, I I think it does, presumably, reduce the requirements to one to apartment, which is fine with me.
Okay. Joe?
Let's see. I I believe it meets the requirements by deflecting the parking issue.
Okay. OJ?
Yep.
Okay, I agree. All right. Now with the waiver, are we willing to waive the density requirements on this project? I'll have a motion to waive the density requirement. Seth, OJ, is there a second? Is there a second? Joe seconded it. Any any more discussion? Okay.
I I just want to remind people what what was in our master plan. That says specifically the town zoning ordinance should provide for some flexibility of design and layout for residential units. And mixed use in established commercial areas, particularly in the village district. The plan use ordinance specifically outlines this flexibility for increased density. As long as all of the zoning requirements are met, which we've already determined. This waiver request is for density, which is what they're asking for. All other zoning requirements are met. I think that this was put into the master plan and our zoning ordinances. Very carefully to specifically address an issue like this where the. The the use of this piece of land, the project presented to us makes total sense. Except for that, that, uh. Crazy rule we have about 15,000 square feet minimum, which we're trying to get rid of in 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 March. Other than that, it meets all the all the requirements. I I hope that we can vote for this waiver.
Okay. Does anyone else have any anything else? All in favor of granting the waiver?
Mark had a question. No, I I don't think it's, I I I it it needs to come up at some point, but I don't think it's necessarily a point. I was going to talk about the water runoff and the ice and issue on the sidewalks as a condition. If the owner be required to maintain a safe condition for the sidewalks. In front of the property as a condition of increasing the density. But I think we could address the waiver first and then come back to that issue.
Okay, we can talk about that as condition of approval.
Yeah.
Okay. Everyone, all in favor of granting the waiver, raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Steve, one nay. Okay, so four approve and one against, and that motion carries. All right, now let's move on to approval. Uh, we have conditions. We have a stormwater management plan reviewed by the town engineer. Demonstrate that you have this sewer capacity for the project. I mean, it counts to Paul.
It it's not just sewer capacity, Jim. You have to find the language from the town manager or from the town engineer. Maybe OJ can come up with it to make sure that there is available. Available capacity in the in the distribution system or distribution system.
Well, they can't get the land use permit without it.
Right. We should call the condition sewer infrastructure capacity, which is two pipes.
That's fine. Yeah.
More infrastructure capacity. Maintaining the sidewalk in front of the unit. Does anyone have any?
Not maintaining, not interfering with the or or degrade, degradating. The the sidewalk. They don't have to maintain that sidewalk. They just can't.
We're just talking about keeping it snow, ice and snow, or runoff, roof runoff that causes the ice. To me, that's a maintenance issue.
I would be careful how you word it. If if they're responsible for maintaining the sidewalk in front of their place, they'll be the only one in the whole town that has to. Maintain their own sidewalk.
Okay, how about mitigating, how about mitigating roof runoff on the sidewalk?
Could I suggest?
Go ahead, Paul.
Could I suggest that you maybe word something to the effect that. That the project does not cause any. Impact, weather-related impact on these distinct sidewalk.
Can I make a comment about that before we adopt? I I think that couching it in language like that, the project will not cause, et cetera, is unrealistic. Because you do the best you can do in terms of designing it, so that it has no impact, but then it has the impact it has. And you're stuck with a project and you got to deal with it. So I I just think that if they design it so that it doesn't cause an impact, then nobody has to do anything. But if it does cause an impact, I think that the owner of the property should be responsible for the. I mean, for maintaining a safe condition of the sidewalks, uh, because it is an increased density. And it is, it is a three-story building with a complicated roof structure and with a. With due deference to Stuart and to the engineering and so on, which I'm sure is first class. There are failures of this sort of thing, and we pointed out the deficiencies of gutters in in this area. And, um, most of the cities that I'm aware of that are further north than we are. Make the owners responsible for maintaining sidewalks. I think we should start doing that. As we get denser.
Well, well, we.
Go ahead, Paul.
I I I I couldn't agree with OJ more on this one. I mean, we don't currently make owners maintain sidewalks. Nor do I think we should. That's, they pay tax, they they pay taxes. They're going to pay taxes as a business owner. And it it is to maintain those sidewalks. So I think that, you know. They should not have to pay to maintain those sidewalks.
Well, we don't want them to create a nuisance upon the sidewalks.
But I I can agree with that, for sure. But I mean, I think they hear the concern and may, you know. I don't know if there's a particular condition that they can give us, you know, maybe they can assist in it. I don't know, but it's. Does it, does the applicant have a a a any suggestion as to how they might want to respond to the concerns of the town with regards to sidewalks? Sidewalk?
Mark is like, you went muted.
Yeah, I mean, that, we spent a lot of time on this with Josh to make sure that we had, uh, figured this out. I mean, if it. You know, I can't imagine maintaining the sidewalk at the same token as Paul had mentioned, but at the same token. We're going to be very proud of this building, so we're going to do all that we can. But when it comes to runoff. I mean, would it make more sense to have a flat roof?
We're already. Design we're working on.
Might I, might I suggest that you you couple this in with your condition that the town engineer, Ray Corver. Ensure, I mean, as part of my drainage design, I show that there's no off-site flows. Ray may have suggestions as to. Uh, if the board is concerned with this particular issue, Ray may have suggestions or be willing to work with me to finalize an engineering approval. This is an engineering issue, uh, not a maintenance issue or anything like that. If if we design it right, the water won't go on the road, well, it won't go on the sidewalk. So maybe we couple this into the the condition that you already have suggested that the applicant gain an engineering approval from Ray Corver.
Anyone else, everyone else okay with that?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, and and you did say you remove the snow from the lot within 48 hours of a storm?
Correct.
Okay, so that'll be a condition for that. All right, so I'm going to go over it again. Demonstrate to have sufficient water and sewer infrastructure. Remove the snow from the property from the parking lot within 48 hours of a storm. Stormwater management plan approved by the town engineer, Ray Corver. Roof runoff mitigation approved by Ray Corver, the town engineer. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to add?
Want to think about off-site parking or anything like that or no?
We've already, you know, we're going to approve that with the site that they presented. So once we vote on that, what they presented for off-site parking will be the law. Paul?
Could I just suggest maybe something be added about, um, a landscaping plan be provided to the town? So it's, uh, that. You have some some commitment from. From the applicant to to provide some landscaping on up on the lot.
Anyone else have any thoughts on that?
So we can get some green space back in the town.
Stuart?
Yeah, I think we can certainly provide a landscape plan as part of the 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 land use permit application. I I guess the only question be, it's kind of a nebulous thing because there is no defined benchmark. That I'm aware of within the ordinance as to what you have to provide and don't provide. So I think we can make an effort, but it's it's, I don't know where that benchmark is.
I mean, we should discuss that as part of site plan approval. I mean, I don't think making it, making it conditional now.
Well, yeah.
Right. I mean, they can submit the most beautiful plan and, you know, the board could not like it, but, you know, we're we're already going to vote on it.
Well, I, you know, we've we've talked about it. And and that's part of the reason why we made some of the changes that are going to be voted on in March was because we want. The board thought that we want that more green space within the town and less concrete and pavement. So, I mean, at some point in time, I guess as long as the, as long as the applicant understands that's what we're kind of looking at. I suppose that probably off, like with me, I just, I'd like to see some greens, green space brought back to the center of town.
Anyone else have any thoughts on that? Want to make it a condition of approval? I'm going to poll the board. OJ?
No.
Mark?
This is about green space?
Make a landscape plan as condition of approval.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, Joe? Joe? Okay. Steve?
Stuart's right, he's not going to do much in five feet of frigid grass.
Okay. And I, I say no, so that won't be on there. All right. So the four conditions, remove the snow from the parking lot within 48 hours of storm, demonstrate there's sufficient water and sewer infrastructure, stormwater management plan approved by the town engineer, roof runoff mitigation plan approved by the town engineer. All those in favor, signify, raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Anyone opposed? Extensions? All right. That motion carries. All right. Good luck, guys.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck, Dr. Joe.
I'll be seeing you up there.
I want to be your first patient, Dr. Joe.
Mark, I'll put you on the list.
Give him a double booking.
Thank you, everybody.
I'm bringing my whole family. I'm kidding.
Okay. Subdivision 2020-05, map 112, lot 55, 49 Main Street LLC, John Gresia, condo conversion of existing retail consumer service use building. Application for subdivision approval to convert a pre-existing commercial retail consumer service building into business condominium units, no change in use. Applicant surveyor Andrew Gennaro, LLS, Horizons Engineering, Inc., 34 School Street, Littleton, New Hampshire, 03561. Property owner, John Gresia, DBA, 49 Main Street LLC, Field Box 127, Lincoln, New Hampshire, Property map 112, lot 55, 49 Main Street, 0.38 acres, Village Center, B.C. District. After subdivision, condominium conversion units will be as follows. Existing lower level into common area, 1631 square feet. Existing main level into common area, 787 square feet. Existing upper level into convertible unit space, 2828 square feet. Existing main level into unit A, 1769. Existing lower level into unit A, 1,304 square feet. Existing main level into unit B, 1,767 square feet. Existing lower level into unit B, 1,285 square feet. Grand total, 11,371 square feet. Okay. Andy, you given the presentation?
Sure. Thanks, thanks, folks. Appreciate your time tonight. It's been a long night, so hopefully this will be a quick, a quick review. It's not a fairly complicated project, as the application says. Let me introduce myself. I guess I didn't do that. I'm Andy Neta with Horizons Engineering up in Littleton. I'll get my name up there. And Stuart is working on this project as well. And I, Brent, I see Brent's on here, the, one of the. So we are proposing to convert 49 Main Street, existing, existing building just into a condominium. It is classified as a subdivision under the ordinance, subdivision of interior space. So the, the site plans, Stuart put the site, the floor plans together and I did a boundary survey and I did a exterior site plan requirement. And we've, I believe that we have submitted the declaration as well for your reading enjoyment. And that's about it. It's pretty simple. I don't believe there's any modifications taking place. It's just, we're just converting these units, these spaces into condominium units.
And how many units are you creating, sir?
Um, there's, there's three units, ah, two units, right, Brent? Brent, are you on?
Yeah, you're muted, Brent.
We're doing two units. It's got to be a duplex, side A, side B.
Right.
I didn't catch that, I'm sorry.
Two.
Two units.
Okay.
There's two.
Two offices remaining or?
No, it, we're taking the building just the way it is. It's already been divided when it was built ago. It has several different rentals in it. All we're doing is cutting the building in half.
Building in half and then one owner for each side, basically.
Correct.
Okay.
Side A, side B, and then one.
Oh, we can't hear you.
It's a little bit hot.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, it's better, Brent.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So anyone missed, didn't hear what I said? Two units?
You're basically cutting the unit in half. Two owners, one, one owner for each side of the building.
Right. It's really just the title.
I still can't, I still can't make it out.
Somebody has a lot of feedback in their, in their microphone and if we mute it, maybe we can hear him better.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit, go ahead.
It's just.
I think you have a lot of, Steve knows where you have a lot of background noise. You keep lighting, lighting up.
Is that me?
Yeah, you could mute.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Is that better?
No.
I wondered if it was my telephone, so I just tried to put the speakerphone on, but I can't tell if it's my telephone.
You, you're not, you're not lighting up, so I don't hear any noise from you.
Okay.
All right. What happened is Steve's, yeah, okay, go ahead, Brent.
Okay. So it's really just a title holding two owners versus one. We're not changing anything that's already currently existing. We're just changing the ownership.
You're not doing any physical construction, is that correct?
Correct.
So they're not cutting the building in half physically. They're just dividing it economically.
Correct.
And who gets billed for the convertible space? Just out of curiosity.
Who gets billed for the convertible space? It, it's common area, so it's, it's.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Because it doesn't have separate heating systems like that. It'll just be common space.
Okay.
Any of the board members have any questions?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
For you and for Carol. In the future, and I've brought this up before and I would like to recommend it highly for the future, when we have a tough one and an easy one, can we put the easy one first? And the tough one second?
That would have been appreciated.
Could we do that forever in the future when we have a slam dunk?
We'll keep that.
We have a slam dunk and a 75-foot jump shot, can we put the slam dunk first and do the jump shot as many times as it takes to get it through the hoop afterwards?
So, so noted.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, OJ?
Yeah, I, I just have a, a question for the applicant. I technically am in a, a butter of this property through my involvement with NLI and I'd be happy to step down if you think that's appropriate, entirely up to the applicant.
Only if you vote no.
I can't say how I'm going to vote before I step down. That would be inappropriate.
I'm just giving you a hard time, OJ.
Do you have any issue with OJ sitting on this?
What? No.
Okay. All right. Go ahead. Any more questions from the board?
Yeah, one.
Go ahead, Steve.
There appears to be a right-of-way behind there. Does that affect you, OJ, or, or is it, is it really a right-of-way or what is it down there?
It is.
Now, is that your right-of-way, Brent, or?
No, it's, it's actually to the property out back. That right-of-way's been there for a long time. Essentially driveway access to that back lot.
The back lot was supposed to have been 10 house lots one time. That's why I took two right-of-way's into it.
Right.
All right. Does anyone have anything else? Carol, is the application complete?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'll have a motion, I'll take a motion to accept the application is complete. So, OJ?
I move.
Okay. OJ made the motion and Joe seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right. Public comment. Motion open, public comment. Okay.
Don't move.
All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Public comment is open. Any member of the public would like to speak on this application? Nobody has spoken. Motion to close, public comment.
So moved. Post it all.
Okay. Mark made the motion, Joe seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any final questions or comments from board members before we vote on this? All right. Is there a motion to approve the subdivision as presented? OJ, is there, Joe seconded? All right. All in favor of granting the subdivision, raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposition? Okay. That's all set.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Yeah, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other business?
Is your slam dunk?
No.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait, wait. I just want to remind people, next week we have, we're looking at the ponds at the Mount Coolidge construction up at Forest Ridge. And because of the COVID situation and I'm presently current quarantined, you're going to have to go look at that, the pond by yourself and then do the site visit by yourself and then come back to the meeting.
Okay. I believe we previously discussed that we didn't want to do a site visit as a board and I'm presuming that's still the case.
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody, though.
Yeah, that's fine. Joe?
When we had that rain, when we had that rain three weeks ago, anybody from the board go up and look at it? I did.
Nope.
And that would be great to discuss that when we're talking about next week. Um, is this, is this next week on the 20th or is it?
Yes.
And then do we have a meeting on the 27th?
No, because we did not make changes to the amendments that we proposed.
Is there anything else on the agenda for next week?
No.
So it's just the pines?
Just the pines.
Got it. Thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Is there a second?
Go ahead.
Raise your, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone? All right. Good night, all.